Okay. Good evening, everybody. Happy to call this to order tonight for the school committee meeting of January 17th, 2024. And we will start by our exciting and proud of you guys.
Federal agent to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, the warrant won't be voted on tonight. I got one email today. Is there, if there's a two, then it's the old one and I can do the older of the two, but it won't be two.
Yes, there was 27 and 28.
I can do 27, can't do 28.
Oh, thanks, sorry about that. 27 and 28, so are we?
We're gonna do 27.
Will approve 27 and postpone 28?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, oh, nevermind. We're not even close to that.
That was a good try, I appreciate the effort.
And adjourned.
Mark, we just sped right through this whole meeting. Um, alright, so we will just have, um, one.
And we have on here the 25, am I looking at the right date? Yeah, FY25 budget vote. We're meeting on the 23rd to look at the final version of it, so we won't be doing that tonight unless there's something else going on.
What's that?
The FY25 budget.
I think we'll maybe discuss, but...
Not vote, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we have the question of the annual report, which is on our agenda for this evening. We were just trying to, well...
And I believe we do need to take a vote on it tonight.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so if we need to take our time on that piece as people needed more time, sorry that I didn't get that to you with more time for you to review it. But we can maybe address that when we get to that item. Um, but thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
Okay, so in that case, any other changes? We can approve the agenda with those adjustments? Okay. Um, so that brings us to the next, um, item is citizen speak. The part of our meeting that we set aside to hear from members of our community who would like to share, um, comments with the school committee. Is anyone in the audience here to participate in citizen speak? Dr. Pavlichek, can you see if anybody online, if you're online and would like to participate, can you please raise your hand at this time?
There are no raised hands currently.
Okay, we'll just give that another few seconds in case someone is, needs a little extra time. Thank you very much. So, we'll just move right into the superintendent's report.
Great. Um, so just a few things before we welcome Pierce, the Pierce team here, which is, looks exciting, an awesome team out there. We are, I've mentioned some big hires that we've been engaged in, so we are now in the thick of all those, those hires. Our Tucker Hiring Committee has been, is currently interviewing candidates this week in a first round. We plan to go back out to the, to, with finalists. We're hoping to do that next week, so we'll be talking tomorrow night when we meet about a plan for that, to engage the community, to have these prospective candidates visit Tucker, meet with community members, meet with students, meet with staff, and, um, and kind of make that decision together collectively. So I'm really excited about that. It's been a long time coming and a number of processes, so it's, it's an exciting process. Our Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, the first round is through and we're working on plans for a second round that will also include a similar kind of process where community will have a chance, an opportunity to meet with our prospective candidates and kind of learn more and we'll use that information as we go through the decision-making process. This man's position here at the end, who just is a complete failure at retirement. His position has been posted, a team is, is getting together, Mark is representing the school committee on that team, and we are beginning that process next week. So those are kind of updates on, on, I think, three really big and important positions for next year. Last week, just, I know we're gonna talk about budget later on, but did want to mention just in my notes here, in case we, we don't spend a lot of time on that, that we did meet with Nick and the team, the, the kind of finance team, last week to just kind of better understand kind of where we are and our, you know, Glenn and I are working together to kind of make sense of what I think is an interesting year, interesting budget year with so much going on in town right now. And, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure we've got all of our needs covered and are looking forward to our meeting next week to talk more about that with the finance committee and then we've got that joint, you know, we've got a half hour together and then that joint meeting, so looking forward to that. We met with, Bow and I, I think that was after the last meeting, we met with the student reps.
Been a long time.
Right?
That was...
I feel like it was like the fifth, maybe?
Yeah, January 5th.
Yeah. So we met with the, the student representatives that may be listening in right now. Do you see them in attendees?
No.
No, okay. They're here in spirit.
Good thought.
And they're really...
They'd be watching on YouTube anyway, they wouldn't be thinking.
That's true, that's true. But they're really excited to engage with all of you and they have done a lot of thinking from the last meeting we had to the meeting on the 5th, I think they had done a lot of thinking about how they want to engage and, and talk about issues. I know they were excited to talk about the calendar a little bit more when we said that was something that the school committee was talking about. So they are, we, we are planning on them coming the next meeting, I believe it is, right, Bow?
February, I remember this February.
Yeah. So I think they're gonna be, we'll have an agenda item for them, they'll be coming and, and presenting, and I think we're just gonna be kind of growing into this and it's something that I think we could probably talk about at our retreat too, which is coming up quite soon, right?
Yep.
Two weeks?
Yeah. So, January 3rd.
And I don't know if you already shared this, but we do have one of the student reps on the Tucker Screening Committee and she's in the line.
Oh, that's great.
She's done a great job. Nice to see her.
And we have two student rep from the high school, also represented at the Director of DEIB Interview Process. They did awesome job asking and answering questions when coming in as well.
That's great.
And, and Adam attended the MLK service at, where was that at?
Concord Baptist.
Concord, yeah. With the, with Mike Zulis, one of the student reps who, who spoke kind of on behalf of the school, which is, which is great too. So look for them, them coming up soon. If you're, just a, a quick shout out in terms of what's going on, Pierce Players starts tomorrow night. So if you're attending the Tucker Hiring Committee meeting tomorrow, don't have anything to do afterwards, that's where I'm gonna be. And it's, it's tomorrow, Friday, and then there's a matinee on Saturday. And that is, that's kind of, those are kind of things I wanted to share, things that are topical.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone have any questions on any of that? Alright, well...
I have one question, just on the Tucker Principal, Pete.
Yeah.
Can y'all, can you share how many applicants?
We currently, we currently have four applicants in this first round that we're talking to, yeah.
It's awesome to see such a formidable team from Pierce here, so, um, yeah, you all are next on our agenda. Thank you so much for coming, to be with us in person especially.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for our annual opportunity to meet with the committee to share some highlights of the really great work that's happening at Pierce and also to give you some insights into not just some of our successes, but the ongoing work and the opportunities for continuous improvement that we've been working on. And not just as a site council, but as a faculty and as a school community at large. We would, I want to just begin by thanking our formidable team that is in attendance tonight. Assistant Principals Janice Mizzola and Matt Murray, teacher representatives Genevieve Martland and Kristen Halcy, and two parent representatives Lexi Bergeron and Devlin. So, um, thank you all for being here, we appreciate it. We've been quite fortunate over the past couple of years to have a large and strong team. We've had anywhere from 12 to 14 members over the course of the past couple of years. And they're both staff and, and family members who represent a whole range of perspectives and experiences and that has only helped to enrich our conversations and helped to direct our work, particularly around opportunities for, for improvement within our school. So, Glenn, you can go ahead a couple.
Love you.
That's fine. Um, you know, when we, I think anytime we have the opportunity to talk about our successes and our celebrations, we have to put our students in the center of that work. I mean, that is why, any role that we have, you as a committee or us as educators or parents, the kids are why we're here and that's what's most important. So, when you think about, I think it's important to specify our commitments to our students and those are things like, you know, when we think about the middle school experience and the age span and everything that is going on in the life of 11, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds, you know, our commitment to fostering an environment to understand values and empathizes with the many changes that our kids are going through at this time. A commitment to developing students' confidence in their identities as learners and thinkers, to develop students' self-awareness, awareness of others, and their ability to build relationships. A lot of, I think, of what you'll hear tonight is anchored in, in those commitments. Take a, just kind of a high-level look at our school profile, which includes current and projected enrollments and how they really have become a substantive part of how we need to educate our community on our needs now and in the near future. And while the prospect of a school building project that will, on the horizon, that will eventually alleviate space issues throughout the district, the reality is that our enrollment continues to outpace staffing that we've added and that will be very much part of our narrative throughout tonight as well as in advocating for our needs in the budget season, which we are in the thick of. And we'll circle back to, put a little bit more detail and data around what, what that looks like. But I think the most important thing that we can do as a site council is tonight is to talk about our successes. And, um, one of the things that we have focused a lot of our time and attention and energies on over the course of the past couple of years and especially this year, is having a focus on building a culture and sustaining a culture where our students thrive. We've had an outstanding start to the start of the school year and it's honestly, it's hard to believe we're already at the midpoint of it. And this year, we've continued our focus on creating experiences and structures for students that continue, continue to contribute to a thriving school culture. We'll spend some time now sharing some of those specific moves that we've made, both to complement the academic program and to continue to build a climate and atmosphere in our school that's dynamic, inclusive, and supportive. So some of the successes that we look forward to celebrating with you tonight is our work around our school values. And I'm gonna invite Janice Mizzola to come join me right now to do that, but also highlight some of our, our work around the responding to bias lessons that we've begun implementing throughout the first semester, provide the committee an, an update on the Grade 6 Seminar class, and Matt Murray is gonna share some insights and some data around student participation and, and our extracurricular activities. So, Janice, if you would now come up and join me so we can talk about Pierce pride and our school culture.
Sure. Thank you for having us. I'm Janice Mizzola, I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Pierce. So last year, at the end of the year, we had a group of teachers who got together and made a decision that we just kind of wanted to revamp some of our values. We'd come up with some, some kind of basic values that, that we were working off of and we decided that we just kind of wanted to make them a little bit more sophisticated and age-appropriate and really blend them into our, our school day. So ultimately, what we came up with was an acronym of sorts with the term Pierce. And so we created these posters. And so our core values are a focus on perseverance, integrity, equity, responsibility, community, and excellence. So we thought that that fit in really well with, with Pierce. So one of the things that we decided to do was to create some lessons that would really start our year focused on these values. And so on the first two days of school, all teachers were focused, you know, rather than jumping right into our lesson planning, it's kind of nice when you have just those two days and then, you know, kind of everyone's kind of finding their way around, learning new things about the school, and then we can really jump into the academics the following week. So we used those two days and particularly two of our teachers really worked hard over the summer. Zakia Jarrett, who at the time was still a Pierce teacher, and Michaela Dixon created these lessons based on each of our values. And so in those first couple of days of school, we broke it down so that all English teachers were, did the lessons focused on perseverance, all math teachers on integrity, social studies teachers focused on equity, science teachers focused on responsibility, world language teachers on community, and then all of our exploratory teachers focused on excellence. And so that was the first day. And then the second day, because our exploratory teachers teach every other day, so they were seeing a different set of kids the next day, all teachers focused on excellence and what excellence looks like specifically in their class. And so there were lesson plans that our teachers had created so that we could really kind of start the year off with a focus on these new values. The lessons, they were great, it was a great way to start the year, to, to just kind of ease the kids in and focus on a lot of, a lot of positive aspects, just, you know, start the year on a good foot. One other thing that we have done, so we started last year actually doing community meetings. We do community, one per month for each grade. And what we do at the community meetings is, you know, it's a time to, to get the grade together, to do announcements and things like that, but also we announce our Students of the Month at each of the community meetings. And then also the, the teachers have an opportunity to do specific shout-outs for kids. And so this year, what we did for our shout-outs is they're all focused on the values. So when the teachers do the shout-outs, you know, they talk about why they're giving this kid, this student a shout-out and they anchor it in one of our Pierce values. So again, the kids are just hearing this consistently, they're hearing the Pierce values consistently. We also have the posters up around the school and in the classrooms, so the students are seeing it that way. Another thing that we did was we revamped our report card comments. We had a great opportunity this year, everything was kind of changing with Power School and so we needed to input a new bank of report card comments. And so we focused all of our report card comments on our values as well. So, just some examples that I brought with me. So like, under perseverance, you know, a, a kind of a positive comment would be, you know, show steady improvement, work successfully implementing strategies, learning from mistakes, those types of things with perseverance. Areas of growth, we would say, you know, is working on engaging productively in class. So we really also wanted, we, we wanted to kind of take the negative language out of the report card comments.
There previously, a lot of the comments were, especially the ones that maybe not were overly positive, were really deficit-based.
Yeah.
So like shifting the feel of those comments, not only to be aligned with the values, but to have them be more asset-based.
Yeah. A little more growth mindset. You know, not there yet, but working on it. That was kind of the focus that we, that we wanted to go with. And so we have comments all, our comment bank is all based on our Pierce values. And, um, we're also, so this year, as our committee continues to meet, you know, we put all of these in place and, and we did start this year, some of our early release days, we did focus on some of our values, but we're doing a little bit more work this year to put together lessons specifically for our early release days next year that will have lessons continued throughout the year that are focused on each of our values.
Janice, glad for going next. Another real specific move in the vein of school culture that we've made this year has been the implementation of what we're calling our Responding to Bias Lessons. Over the course of the past two years, we've implemented lessons for students that identify and explore the history of an impact of slurs and microaggressions. And this work was really specific to hate speech, but it was also often reactive to situations and instances that had occurred either in the Pierce community or in the community at large. And this year, last spring, while Zakia Jarrett was still part of the Pierce staff, she and I partnered and did some brainstorming around how can we make this shift from being really reactive to being more proactive and equipping students and staff with kind of the habits of mind, common language, that would allow them to be able to recognize and respond to, to bias when, when it happens in a more ongoing and proactive manner. So you can see here, I won't go through it, but each of the lessons has a theme and a lot of it is really about just building capacity and building, again, that common language and having there be this common thread that this is something that we do throughout our work and it's not just when something bad happens or something unexpected happens. We've collected feedback from educators and students on the lessons, it's, for the most part, it's been positive and constructive. After the first lesson, educators reported having, feeling like the lessons had gone well, the students were engaged and that the educator's comfort level in delivering the lessons was increasing with more practice. A majority of students shared that they believe that these lessons are important and that they thought that they would learn from the experience with the lessons. But throughout, we've identified opportunities for improvement. Things like engaging more staff, engaging staff in more professional development, we've previewed lessons with staff, we've allocated principal time and, and professional development time to, to building that capacity, but we see there being more opportunities to continue to do that. And also additional opportunities in tailoring lessons to have them be more targeted at grade levels. For example, in sixth grade, maybe, you know, having more scaffolds in language and so on versus making the assumption that an 11-year-old and a 14-year-old may have, may be at the same entry point for those, for these, for engaging these conversations. We wanted to provide the committee with a short update on our Grade 6 Seminar class. Last fall, when, when we presented, we were just in the infancy of the rollout of the, of the class. And to give a little bit of perspective, especially for the, for the new members, three years ago, our instructional leadership team engaged in some conversations around strategies for better supporting students' transition from elementary school to middle school. And the, at the time, these deliberations were in line with school improvement goals that, that were part of our, our school improvement plan. Simultaneously, we were working with families who often found themselves struggling with that transition from elementary school to middle school. And in particular, the challenges that came with blending four unique elementary communities into Pierce, you know, for the first time. So the creation of the Seminar class was a multi-pronged strategy to better meet students' needs in a creative and authentic way while providing sixth graders with a common experience. And that was something that had been missing for, for a long time. It was sort of like catch, just catch, can it's sort of disparate experiences, but being able to provide all 350-plus and 360-plus sixth graders with a common experience has been something that has been invaluable and as the course, it's, the development of the, of the content and curriculum has been iterative and you can see in the slides, there's now eight, eight units that stand on their own, ranging from starting with executive functioning and, and become, and habits of mind of, of a middle school student, ranging through now the implementation of more, there's more project-based learning, there's a common read of the adolescent novel, restart, there's just layering in more academic opportunities too, all while building a sense of community and connection to, to students in school. Feedback from students and families continues to be quite positive across the board, you know, students, well, many students describe it as one of the best parts of their day. Families have described that some of the explicit lessons around executive functioning, organization, and, and building a sense of community has alleviated many of the, many of the tensions that are inherent to the, to the transition from, from fifth to sixth grade. I'm just gonna ask Dr. Murray to come, join me to talk a little bit about the work that happens beyond the school day through our, through our extracurricular programming.
Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you all today. So we're really fortunate at Pierce where we have opportunities for students to do things outside the classroom that really meet all of their needs. We don't focus on just one aspect of a student, we have things for everyone. For instance, in early September, we rolled out our clubs and our pass classes for our Pierce students. We have 16 clubs that we offer throughout the entire, over the course of the year. We offer eight pass classes and that fluctuates based on session and those run for eight weeks at a time. We just recently rolled out our winter pass classes this week and they'll run from January 29th until early March. And those clubs really do span students' academic, artistic, and athletic interests over the course of the year. To highlight just a couple ones that we offer, our math team, which has 14 participants, and our debate team of 24, allow our students to explore ways to expand academic curiosities outside of the classroom through enrichment and competition. And while our homework club, which has 23 participants, provides kids with time and space to complete assignments in an structured and supportive environment with their teachers. Dr. Burrows mentioned earlier our Pierce Players production this upcoming Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It continues to be one of our most popular clubs at Pierce. We have over 80 students who are in either the cast and crew and they work tirelessly through the course of the school year to put those performances on. We'll all be there this week and we can't wait to see what they put on for Anastasia. And then lastly, to highlight, our athletic sports and activities, we had a Pierce cross-country team this year, which...
Went the wrong way.
Our Pierce cross-country team, which ran for six weeks from mid-September until late October, they competed in four meets and we actually had 120 students be able to participate in that club, I'm sorry, in that team, rather, and it really allowed for them to be in a healthy space, to learn how to be successful not only physically, but also connect with their peers in a positive, social manner as well. Thank you, everyone.
And so when you look at the participation in cross-country and Pierce players, it's north of 200 students, that's more than 20% of our students are engaged in one of those two at any given time, which is, I think, unique, unique to a middle school experience. Thanks, Matt. At this point, we'll shift our focus to bring the committee up to speed on some school improvement efforts and initiatives that we've been engaged in throughout this school year. Our school improvement efforts continue to be grounded in three tenants of academic achievement, social-emotional learning and behavioral health, and diversity, equity, inclusion. We view these tenants as being interdependent and we have to view social-emotional learning, behavioral health, and diversity, equity, inclusion as the foundation of our values and ultimately of excellence in education. So in getting into some of the more specifics of our improvement plan, we are entering the final year of our three-year school improvement plan. So throughout the spring, our site council will draft that in next iteration of improvement planning that will span the 2024 through 2027, those three school years. We'll talk a little bit later in the presentation, we'll kind of wrap up with how we're seeing some of those themes of the improvement plan shape up. But for now, in the current plan, each of these priority areas that will, which are school culture, student support and engagement, teaching and learning, data culture, and facility staffing and enrollment, they are, all, I think, easily, they easily can, easily see the connection between the work that's happening in school improve, our improvement plan with the strategic initiatives outlined in the district's strategic plan. And we'll, we'll highlight a few of those shortly. But throughout the presentation, we'll share some of these key actions that are embedded within these priority areas that make up our three-year plan. So that first priority area, which is school culture, student support, and engagement, related to the goal that's outlined here, we have a theory of action that says that if our school's culture promotes inclusivity, respect, and achievement, then students and educators will be able to excel and thrive. And some illustrative examples toward actualizing that goal, we've highlighted a few already tonight, the work around embedding and creating some more sophisticated core values that are, become part of our everyday practices and, and the ways that... are become part of our everyday practices and in the ways that Janice highlighted. Responding to bias lessons are closely connected to the to school culture, student support, and engagement. And I also want to mention, because it hasn't previously been mentioned, our work with restorative practices is something that I, as the building principal, and we as a leadership team and extending through our staff are really seeing gains on from the community circles that are often led by Cyrus Rivers and Adina Schechter, who have been wonderful partners in this work, to the restorative circles that that are brought together in times of of harm or conflict, to building teachers' capacity to facilitate circles. We've seen many, a lot of gains over the course of the past year, year and a half especially, and I want to give Adina a lot of credit for that and her leadership. And when you look at, I'm giving a lot of anecdotal information, but when you look at the discipline data, we've just about eliminated the use of auto-school suspension. So that that should be a highlight or a headline here is we are down to, in the course of the past 15 months, we've, I think, it's, I don't want to say how many, but it's like here.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah. So that, again, we think about how that rolls up into what how school, what school culture looks like and feels like. For students and staff, we're seeing lots of gains. In moving over to teaching and learning, in order, we have a theory of action that supports this this goal that says if we engage students in rigorous standards-based curricula and invest in professional learning for educators, then we support the learning and development of all students. So some aspects of our work related to this goal are around like progress monitoring and looking at achievement data, as well as the professional development that we've been providing to educators over the course of the past couple of years, both around universal design for learning, but also personalization, personalization through choice, which are fundamental and foundational when we think about personalized learning. So I'm going to ask now Genevieve, Martlin, and Kristin House, you're going to join me for different parts, to talk a little bit about the ELA and math, both MCAS data as well as the iReady data. In just a couple of comments about the MCAS data, I know that these data have been presented to the committee already, so we're not going to belabor them, but these are high-level thoughts and observations. In both ELA and math, we've seen across the district and specifically at Pierce, results indicate a halt in the pandemic slide and that recovery is underway, but there are need to acknowledge that there are still gaps when we go back looking at the 2019 levels. MCAS data consistently indicate that we're making progress towards closing the unfinished learning gaps, but there are still areas that we need to work on, specifically the achievement gaps that persist in our priority subgroups. These are the students who were, who had the most unfinished learning as a result of the pandemic and we are not just hopeful, but expect that they will also continue to see gains back from 2022, both in ELA and math. So in addition to the MCAS data, which we'll talk about shortly, we'll also do a little bit of overview of the iReady screener data, both for reading and and for math. Genevieve, what do you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure, I was going to talk a little bit about the iReady data. I'm happy to talk about the MCAS data as well, but I know that it's already been discussed. This was the first year that the English department used iReady as a reading screener. We do it the first week or two of school in the fall and it does give us a very good snapshot of where students are reading. Obviously, it's one data point, but it gives us a quick picture of the beginning of the year as we're getting to those students about where they're reading. And then as we get MCAS data, we're able to take a look at the MCAS data, take a look at the iReady data, see what kind of interventions we need to put into place if we see students who are struggling in particular areas of reading or need stronger interventions than we might be able to give in the classroom specifically if we see that they're quite far behind in their reading. And you can see when we get to the iReady data piece, like students who are multiple grade levels behind might need a bigger reading intervention if they're not already receiving one. So it gives us a quick snapshot at the beginning of the year. We just took the winter screening of iReady as well for just reading, not math at the middle school. Since it's our first year in the English department, we were just getting a good feel of how to use the data, but some of the things that came out pretty quickly were, we could see that students in sixth grade, for instance, were struggling a little with vocabulary and context. So we could adapt how we were teaching vocabulary and shift a little extra activities into vocab and context. So that information from the beginning of the year, seeing large group, large groups of students struggling with one subset, gave us some strategies or some ideas that we should use some strategies to help implement some changes in just our classroom. We also, in sixth grade, decided to build up some more independent reading goals and created a reading odyssey for our students. And we were lucky enough after our first meeting with the iReady group to, they gave us the opportunity to pilot a little, the MyPlaPath program, which we've been starting to use, which allows students to do some extra reading work on their own independently. It's just one more tool. On Friday, we met with iReady and looked at the preliminary data from the winter screening and it was a really helpful meeting, it was really good, but she was, the woman who presented to us was super impressed with where we were. She said it was in line with end-of-the-year reading data versus winter reading data. So that was really optimistic. Obviously, it's our first time using a screener and really understanding where we're expecting our students to be by the winter and having a better sense of it. But having the time on Friday, I think, to sit down with a consultant to really look at the information that we could access using, using the, like, the platform was really helpful and definitely has given us some more ideas about how we can implement some better strategies to help support our readers of the classroom. So it's been a good start, especially in reading, using iReady for the first time.
Yeah, I think the comment that was from the facilitator who did the training on analyzing the data said to Kataroche that Pierce growth is outpacing typical growth as norm by iReady and like by like 70%. So it was, it's encouraging. Again, one data point, not predictive of MCAS, but definitely encouraging, encouraging news from fall to winter.
As we do it next year, we'll have a better sense of what that means as well.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we are seeing with screener data for math. I don't know if that's
Glenn, do you mind just skipping ahead a little bit?
Yeah, just a little.
Couple more. Next one.
There we go. So here we can see that particularly in grades six and seven, we are looking at a small percentage of students who are really presenting with unfinished learning needs. And then similar to what they had done in the English, we, in the English department, we took that data and we cross-referenced it with performance data from MCAS to see which students we really needed to take a focus on, make sure that we were providing the correct interventions and supports and, you know, what that looked like on a tiered level. And then students who are receiving those supports currently for math also took the winter screener. So we are in the process of collecting that data. It hadn't been, some students haven't yet finished it, but it will allow us to access their particular individual pathways and then address their more individualized student needs to, again, work on closing that achievement gap, especially for our most vulnerable learners in math.
Kristin, thank you. Now, would you like to go back and talk a little bit about the MCAS data? I know you have seen it, but what I would sort of summarize in saying is that we, what we've seen, what we saw in the 2023 administration, continued gains in the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations across all three grade levels in ELA and math, as well as in science in eighth grade. Moving ahead to the last school improvement goal that we wanted to highlight for the committee tonight is around facility staffing and enrollment. And, you know, related to the goal, we have a theory of action that says, if student enrollment continues to expand as projected, then Pierce will have to increase classroom spaces and staffing in proportion to this growth. Two aspects of this work related to meeting this goal include the work that we've done around some creative short-term solutions and staffing solutions to negotiate the growing enrollments. But we know that our sixth grade enrollment is always going to be higher than seventh and eighth through, through a position that we were able to add through the budget process last year and pairing it with an existing position. We were able to onboard a fourth team in sixth grade, which is a two-person team at this, at this point compared to four-person, three, four-person teams. What that has done is allowed us to bring class sizes in grade six down to 22 across the board, where the year before we were averaging, I think it was 24.8. Kristin and Genevieve are both sixth-grade teachers, so they can, I'm sure, they can speak quite a bit to that. One of, one of the requests that wasn't funded was exploratory teachers. So in our science, our STEM music, we're at, we're at an impasse right now because we have, this year, we were able to, because of significantly smaller enrollment in eighth grade, we were able to repurpose eighth-grade teaching schedules so that they are now, eighth-grade teachers are currently teaching for, say, eighth-grade math classes versus five, like compared to their sixth and seventh-grade colleagues. Their fifth class is an exploratory class. So we have teachers out of content area but teaching, not always out of content area, eighth-grade science teachers teaching STEM, eighth-grade teachers teaching the sixth-grade seminar class. So that was something that we knew we were able to be able to get by this, with this year, but that was not going to be a sustainable model, which is, I'm sure the committee knows that that's where the request for the two FTEs has come from, for the FY25 budget. The, when we look at, when we look at the enrollment data, these are, the committee is familiar with these numbers, but they're important to illustrate because of the challenges around growing enrollments aren't going away. And while we've been able to be creative with how we've reallocated spaces, and we talked about that last year's site council presentation, our enrollment, our staffing is not keeping pace with our, with our enrollment. And that crossroads that we're at right now is that without having our, those personnel requests funded, we could find ourselves in the spot of having students who don't have full schedules, not even just having huge class sizes, but not even be able to complete, you know, have a full master schedule. And I expect there will be opportunities to talk about that as we go through our phase of educating the community around that, but I think it's important to state here. Glenn, do you mind going to the next slide? So you see this, these are, these projections for next school year and the school year two years from now is based on average attrition data. So this isn't NASDAQ data, but it's also not straight-line data. This is based on what we know about patterns and trends over the past few years, what we expect based on current enrollments. And you'll see that next year, we'll be at, we are expecting to be at our highest enrollment ever with no real end and too far in sight. So consistent pattern is that that sixth grade is always significantly higher than seventh and eighth, which more at the fourth team and so on. And I'm speaking to, you know, to a group that understands that. When you do look, Glenn, if you can go to the next slide, one of the, okay, it's a number of sections that are over 25 students. And what you'll see from, there was an anomaly last year, a lot of those were happening in the exploratory classes, but we had, last year, we had 14-team classes that were over 25 and most of those were in sixth grade, which again drove the decision to to add that two-person team in sixth grade. And the good news story here is that that move in sixth grade paired with the creative repurposing of eighth-grade teacher's schedules is we've, we've driven down that number from 86 to 50 classes that are 25 or over. Only two of them are on, and only two of them are on team. So it shows what happens when we're more appropriately staffed. So as we wrap up our time and the opportunity that we've had to to speak with you, I would hope that some of the takeaways would be that there's lots to celebrate, but we need to ensure that we are striving to continuously improve. And to that end, some identified opportunities for improvement that we can expect to be part of the next school improvement plan include, one, first and foremost, maintaining a grounded focus on academic excellence and raising the bar for all students. Academic excellence has to be a key driver in any of our improvement efforts. And we've spent several pandemic-ridden years getting by and subsequent years addressing unfinished learning and other impacts of the pandemic, but pandemic. But in our work forward, we have to have a laser focus on ensuring high expectations for all students, characterized by rigorous learning experiences across all grades and disciplines. Our instructional leadership team has begun undertaking this as a priority of our work this year, and we look forward to providing the school community with updates on this work as we move through the spring and into the fall. Second, again, I think, I hope that one of the key takeaways tonight is the emphasis that we've put on building that school climate in which, in culture in which students thrive. We've made a lot of gains in the course of the past few years from the values to the responding to bias lessons, but like this work is never done and you don't, it can't be, it doesn't have to be one or the other. You can, you can have, strive for academic excellence while continuing to build a strong school culture where kids feel seen, heard, and important. To do all this, we need to be, continue to be bringing our educators along. So charting a course toward academic excellence will require us to continue to equip educators with meaningful and in-time professional learning experiences. And, you know, one of the most important things that we can continue to do, and this is something Dr. Burrows and I have talked about in our first six or seven months of working together, is communicating and advocating for the needs and highlighting the successes that were, that are happening in our, in our school. So to meet these goals, we'll need to ensure and maintain the buy-in from our community at large. Much time and focus has understandably been, been put into securing a new school building, but that will take time to come to fruition. And along the way, we need to continue to advocate for our schools' needs, the necessity for adding staff, as well as the consequences of not having those requests met.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Questions, comments?
I know, so do I. I was like, well, I'll go first since you're being so generous. So I've had the pleasure of working with Bill for multiple years, so I feel like this is a before and after story. So please excuse the questions, but you'll know exactly why I'm asking, especially around culture and of course outcomes. So that bias lesson that you've been working on, at what, is there a particular content area or class during which that is taught?
We've leveraged the, the early release days. So those schedules, on early release days at the secondary level, they can be pretty broken-up days with 25 and 26-minute periods. So we've, we've constructed schedules that are, that are just, allow for blocks of time for this to happen school-wide. It's happening simultaneously across the building. And that has helped to garner a lot of buy-in from staff because we're not asking all math teachers to stop what they're doing and having to, you know, prioritize one over the other. We're saying we have this structure through the early release days. How can we use them better and use them in ways that are about building community? And in addition to responding to bias lessons, many of our teachers are using those days. They're finding them to be great days for, you know, team-building activities and community building activities and whether community meetings or, you know, things that are happening around, you know, in the fall and there were, there were, you know, pumpkin decorating, just those things that contribute to students feeling good and connected to school. We've been able to build into those days to not have to compete with other instructional time during the other days.
Thank you. During the sixth grade seminar, I remember when you were part of establishing that, thank you very much, it was mirrored with this We the People program where students were being prepared in fifth grade. So when you added that fifth-grade experience to the sixth-grade seminar, as a matter of fact, one of the moms is literally texting me telling me, oh, I can't believe my child's teacher's there, she's so happy. It was a very, for, for some, for the families that were willing to communicate, it was a very positive experience. Is that something you, that is going to continue that fifth grade plus the summer, ready for middle school and then the sixth-grade seminar? I think it was a good experience for many students to get a continuity before they arrived at Pierce and it literally jump-started that community experience. Is that something that you plan on continuing?
It's something that we were unable to continue last spring and into summer and some of it just had to do with availability of staffing to do it. But one of the things that, you know, that Dr. Burrows and I have talked about is, as we think about better systematizing some of these transitions and thinking about some of the experiences that have been successful and some of, in layering them onto of the experiences that have been successful and some of, in layering them onto the work that's currently happening, I think that there's opportunities to pull from what has been done and what is currently happening to ensure that all students are having opportunities to high-quality experiences like those.
Well, I hope you consider bringing that back. I think it really made a difference for the students that were able to participate, and even the older students that were mentors enjoyed that experience. And then my, my last question about the culture is, when I was on the Site Council, you had implemented movement breaks, which many kids look forward to, including my daughter who said to me, Mom, when I go to middle school, I won't have recess. And I said, no, no, Dr. Fish has movement breaks. Is that something that's still happening at Pierce?
The movement breaks were really a function of, they were, they were the mask breaks 2.0, right? That we found that for middle school students, when we had, when we moved away from having to have the mandated mask breaks, that there was value in those movement breaks. And, I mean, Genevieve and Kristin can speak to this as well, and Bebe will remember this from your time on Site Council, when we reviewed, when we revamped that master schedule, one of the aspects of it that continues to be a huge highlight is flex time, and it's the 30-minute block during the, 30-minute stretch during the long block in the day where students have more, you know, more choice around how that time is spent. And a lot of that, whether it may not be a formal movement break that's built into the day.
So you got rid of them. You get, that's ridiculous. Like, I'm not sure where he's going.
We did, no, but, but there are, especially for sixth-grade students who have gone from having things like recess throughout their elementary experience, that would, would you guys, I don't say agree, but comment that the...
I think the students absolutely appreciated it. I'm not sure what's going on now, not in the Site Council, but if it's, these are all things that were, in my, I have the experience that I know that families and students found valuable.
Yep. There is movement that's happening during the flex time. There are some teams and some teachers will use that, because I think the same here. But no, it is not, the direct answer is not built into the master schedule anymore.
Well, thank you for the laugh, that was, if anything. And now to the academic side, and I promise I'll go soon. So is it safe to say, because I don't, I remember, we got the data, but the students that are two and three grade levels, are they tend to be in those high-priority groups? Is that safe to say?
They do, yes.
And I know that you were looking into new interventions, and you know what I'm going to ask next, which is, which one of those interventions are you seeing having the greatest impact on students? Because it wasn't just one, like there were extra sections, I've learned today about some new strategies. Which do you think are really moving the needle for students? And how much of these conversations are around understanding why it's happening?
Right. I think the subgroup that's most frequently represented in the multiple grades below grade level are students on I-Ps. So looking, a lot of the work with is the shift away in the mindset of what academic skills and what some of those services look like versus of being, focusing on remediating disability, and specifically if you're a student with a specific learning disability in math, the likelihood that you're, that is represented in that multiple grades below grade level is strong. So in working with Danielle and her onboarding, and I think that's a, specifically that's a special education, a conversation we have with our special educators in the special education, but that, in addition to that, the more like tier-two interventions, which is the math investigations class that happens in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, not just that it's there, but what we're doing in those classes, and that's something like what Kristin was saying before, about look deeper, dive into those data about the students who are two and three grades below grade level, and triangulating it with other achievement data like MCAS or Common Assessment Data, to get an understanding on the individual student level as to what's happening, and then having the interventions be more individualized and targeted. And that MyPath program through iReady, where there's a lot, a lot of excitement about being used across the board in ELA, and then in those subgroups in math, in some of our sub-separate special education programs, but also in the math investigation, the tier-two.
Is it safe to say that they're coming in below level? They're not just losing ground once they get to Pierce? Is that safe to say? Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
And thank you for what you shared today. I really enjoyed going down memory lane and hearing about the wonderful things that you're doing at the school.
Thank you.
He just has one question.
I have one, I had six, I'm so sorry.
Forty-three parts.
If I can ask about enrollment first, obviously, like you, we've done building walkthroughs together, I appreciate all the tours you've done, a couple of those at this point, see the space impacts, absolutely. The slide 21 that you had around showing kind of total enrollment, that actually, you know, total enrollment's, you know, is essentially flat since SY21. And I'll say for context for anybody watching, obviously, like you go, you know, a few years before that, overall, about five years ago, we're about 50 students up, and about 10 years ago, we're about 100 students up. So like historically, enrollment has increased and it's become tight. That's not reflected within this chart that you're sharing, kind of, it's the one right before, that's Glenn, the one I'm referencing. But anyways, yeah, in terms of the next chart, though, the 25-students sections drastically increasing, even though enrollment is flat, like what is your sense of why that is happening? Is that because there are other sections that are just under-enrolled, or are you trying to do a better job of putting kids in their top preference, given most of this is around, like exploratories and not on teams? What's your sense of why that number has jumped from 11 to 50, even though enrollment has changed by three?
That 11 is because during the school year, that was the return of school, school year, we added 4.0 FTEs through, with, with federal funding to be able to run our hybrid and remote models. So with, we had four additional FTEs to be appropriated across the school, across the school. So when I, I mentioned last year when we talked about this, when I highlighted that, when we have the appropriate level of, the right level of staffing, the number of sections over 25 decreases dramatically.
Great. I appreciate the clarity, but that's very helpful. Have you seen just generally enrollment, like a change? Obviously, numbers are increasing as you have your projections, like is the retention rate, I know you talked previously about kids leaving in kind of seventh and eighth grade for these private schools, is there, do you have data on, like, is that retention rate obviously improving, or is it just that the incoming class is bigger, but your loss is about the same as it's been historically?
The incoming classes continue to be big, and then I don't have the, those numbers in front of, but what I, what, what it seems to be, and there's, you know, not a multi-year trend yet, but that, that sixth-to-seventh grade year that we're, we're seeing a slight decrease in the percentage of students who are leaving, which is then putting, you know, continuing to put more pressure on, on, in seventh grade, where, you know, in...
Great, hopefully that's a testament to, like, people feeling good and satisfied.
Genevieve and Kristin can attest, when I, in meeting with the sixth-grade team not long ago, in, in talking about our thinking around planning for next year, the double-edged sword of, you were hearing from more and more families who are having, who are at least openly talking about the wonderful experience that their kids are having, especially in sixth grade, and less seem to be leaving. The downside, you know, which is, which is again a testament to the work that the sixth-grade team's doing. If there's a, I don't want to call it a downside, because I am one who personally believes that, you know, it's best when students, you know, are educated in their home schools and in their communities, but lower attrition's going to put more pressure on enrollments and class sizes.
Yep, absolutely. Questions, a couple of questions around MCAS, just, you know, your science, your eighth-grade science scores are really impressive. I mean, other scores are impressive too, I have some questions on, but like, science scores obviously like 93rd percentile, 92nd percentile, whatever it is, and last year it was, you know, also in the top 10 percentile. So, you know, that's, that's something that has stood out to me since those scores came out. Like, can you share how many minutes do kids get of science, and like, is there a curriculum? Like, what do you think is the thing that is like moving the needle and allowing, you know, Milton students to perform at a higher level than kind of their comparable kids across the state within that area?
Consistency is probably, would be, is my hypothesis there. We haven't, so the amount of instructional time is equivalent for science as it is for math in ELA, which is different than K-5. In science, the, it was, please don't quote me, how many years ago? Four or five years ago, when science went through a rigorous curriculum review, adoption of new, new curricula, PD for implementing, implementing it, and now I think over the past couple of years, really seeing the benefits of that take hold. In math in ELA, curriculum has more recently been adopted, and I think that there's just, I would expect, I would anticipate that if we follow the same trajectory and timeline for ELA math that we had for science, that we would, we would see those, we would see those gains several years down the road. Because we're seeing, it is trending back in that, in that direction.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, again, your sixth-grade growth from last year to this year too was really, really strong, and, you know, particularly impressive, given that was your largest incoming cohort ever. So teachers did that with larger class sizes and with more kids, and, you know, still kind of pushed those results to the top 10, you know, 14th percentile in the state. So again, that, that really was impressive as well. Anything in particular that y'all saw about sixth grade? I know you have more experienced, kind of, some experienced teachers in sixth grade who are obviously represented here, but like, anything y'all took out of that data performance that you can share?
I suspect that some of it has to do with whether the Amplify in ELA, in Desmos and in math, having multiple years now of implementation and getting, you know, I think more comfortable, finding ways in some cases, like with Amplify, augmenting the curriculum in, in ways that are aligned with, better aligned with standards and, you know, teacher observations of where students have opportunities for more growth. I also, I'm speculating there, but I also speculate that the work that the sixth-grade team has done around being so deliberate around fostering that transition and getting students more ready for middle school than they were in the past, is likely has an impact there too.
Yeah. Also, I don't want to discount the other grades, but the growth within the sixth grade was particularly notable in my, in my opinion. Another question just about sixth grade, and obviously this being, you referenced this being the year you implemented the half-team. Is there, do y'all have any, like, internal metrics within iReady or anything else where, that you're looking at to say, like, is the half-team model working as well as the full-team model? Are you seeing any difference in student performance, or any concerns from families regarding student experience and...
We haven't looked at the screener data yet, and looking at, like specifically reading from fall to, fall to winter, to look at how that, how if at all that is, students' experience on a two-teacher team is helping or hindering student progress. More of our conversations about what the two-person team is like compared to the four-person team is more around student experience. And, you know, early in the year, I had a handful of conversations and meetings with, with families who, it would often start with, we know why academically this is great for our students to have two teachers who get to know them really well, but there was a feeling of that their experience was, was limited compared to that of their peers. We did do it right after the winter break, and I, we're doing an analysis of the data with, or the feedback, both with the, the two teachers on that team as well as with our leadership team, is we surveyed the Jupiter team, and that's the name of the team, students and families, for their feedback on things ranging from assessing their, the transition from elementary to middle school, what are the strengths of the two-person team, what are the drawbacks, what could be differences, and use that as an opportunity to potentially make some adjustments to our practice in the second semester. But a lot of them, I, in looking at doing, you know, preliminary review of the data myself, or of the feedback myself, a lot of it is more focused around the social aspect of it and less around, around the academic.
And is that because the kids are just in less classes? I know they have fewer teachers, obviously, but that obviously means they're in less classes.
There's 44 students on that two-teacher team versus 103 or so on the, so it's, it's just a number of different opportunities for interactions. And the limitations in the schedule, the reality of it is, on the two-teacher team, students are traveling almost in two cohorts, so there's not a lot of variability in, in their four-team classes.
And that's, as of right now, still the plan for next year as well, from a staffing perspective?
The, the positions that we're, we're asking for in the, in the FY25 requests would allow us to make that, that team whole.
Oh, the four, oh, yes.
To make the, for a four-person team as a, as a priority there, and using some of the creative solutions that we've learned from what we've done with the eighth-grade teachers this year to, it's probably premature to be talking like public space like this about, like, what the specifics of those planning look like, but, but yes, the goal is to get the four teams in sixth grade to be all four-person, four-teacher teams.
I have a few more, but, I'm sorry.
This, he does a step review.
I'm sorry. So another thing that struck me in your iReady data, especially your reading data, is the percentage of kids who came in, because I assume that's your start-of-the-year data as the other schools have, came in, you know, multiple grade levels above. Obviously, like as you, as kids get older, the learning gaps, the differentiation between kind of performance is, is greater, and the need for differentiation is, is bigger, which is why smaller classes within those spaces is really helpful for teachers to be able to provide that support, which gets back to, again, your request for the staffing and all those pieces, so certainly to tie it back in. But like, what are, for, again, families or anybody else, like, what are the things you look at, maybe beyond iReady data, to see, like, those kids who are already coming in and above level? Can iReady measure how much more above level they are as they go on? Like, is iReady still an effective tool for those kids who are already testing at that highest level, or are there other metrics you use?
You do get information beyond grade level, so you could start. You get information that tells if a student's reading is seventh, so in sixth grade, if seventh, eighth, you know, so you can get information about how high. And truthfully, you have to, like, recognize some of that data can get skewed sometimes. Like, if you're reading in an eighth, sixth grade, you're reading at an eighth-grade level, and you get a question wrong near the end, and yours goes down to top of seven instead of eighth, I don't think that student's gone down. I think that they had a hard question. You know, like, that data looks different than it does for a student who might be struggling to access grade-level curriculum or be a level or two behind grade level. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And you do see that, like, it does shift over time, like exposure to reading. So as we continue to try to push for, like, students to continue to read as much as they can, we try to bridge some of those gaps.
Just, do you mind if I ask a little follow-up on that piece? Can you talk a little bit about what's in place for students who are mid or above grade level in the beginning of the year, and sort of how, in, in terms of like the personalized learning, what that looks like for those students who need a little bit more of a challenge?
So depending, I mean, obviously it depends on, like, the unit of study and what we're working on, but a lot of, you know, teachers, like, we get to know our students as individuals, we can see who's able to access things quite well, and we do try to provide opportunities for those students sometimes to do challenges beyond the challenges we're doing, like even right now, as we're in sixth grade, really pushing independent reading. We know we have students who just have a practice of independent reading and have for a long time, but, you know, we make sure to highlight their gains just in the same ways we highlight other students. But last year in sixth grade, I had an initiative where there was a bonus unit on Sherlock Holmes, and the text was challenging, it was, you know, really reading Sherlock Holmes and doing kind of little extra work around it. And not always do we want to provide extra work, but like, you know, anyone can access it, but if you really spent the time and like decided to go into this unit, we actually, we did like a fun little pull for like a little... we did like a fun little poll for like a little prize poll and the students who got involved kind of got recognized for it. So just also like giving them the opportunities if they choose sometimes to take them or if any student wants to take take a challenge, like allow them to have those challenges as well.
I'll email my rest.
So if I could just follow up on the, I think you mentioned it already in terms of like it's been sort of the curriculum review that we did for ELA in math was later than science. Sort of where are we like, did you say about three years is it since?
Since the review?
Yeah, since the review and the and the adoption of the new.
The English curriculum review was in the 1920s school year.
Okay.
So this would be we're in year four of the of the implementation.
Just because anecdotally, and I don't have sort of, you know, hard data, but sort of heard concerns around the ELA and I think it's more around sort of the students who are coming above grade. And so, you know, sort of where, how are you feeling about the current curriculum and where we are and is it, you know, is it challenging enough?
I think that if you asked five different people, you'd get five different answers on that, to be honest with you. The Amplify curriculum is built to be to have the to have the flexibility within it to differentiate in both directions. There is, the first couple of years of implementation were hard. The first one was during the the hybrid remote year when students were getting for the first two thirds of the year, half the ELA instruction in trying to remember the work with Kat of pairing down the units to, you know, essential knowledge and so on. there continued to be, and these are parts of the conversations that Kat and I have of of where are our opportunities to get to better leverage the tools with Amplify or where where at some point do we need to also look and say, how are we augmenting the curriculum as well? And then just being being open and and honest about that because there are, I know comments have been made publicly too criticizing Amplify in this room, right? And that like that happened and that's real. And I think we don't, we can't discredit the experiences that educators have or that students have. It's a matter of, you know, looking openly at what's going well and where are our opportunities to for, you know, continued improvement. And that's where, like I was mentioning, when I think about our our path forward in in continuous improvement, that school improvement plan, I think we have an opportunity, I know we have the opportunity across the board to raise the bar in 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 most cases across the board, I think, at least to provide a higher level of consistency of rigorous academic experiences for all students. And I think that your question fits right into into that work. And, you know, all disciplines, all grades, you know, all classrooms, and I think that, well, I don't have a formulated response to your question right now. I think that that's okay. And I don't think you're expecting me to. It's, you know, pushing me and pushing us, you know, in that that work around raising the bar and I expect that 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 you can expect to hear from me and from us as we come back to the to the committee and, you know, next year and the year after, the work around around that.
Thank you. And I think my only not question but comment is I appreciate all the work that you've done to try to really sort of, you know, codify and speak to what is the school culture that you want to foster, right? And a lot of it is around the values, but I was very pleased to hear that you didn't just sort of name the values and speak to what they are, but actually are operationalizing them and having students see them and as well as staff, because that's how you're going to be able to shift, you know, culture in the direction that you want. So I really do commend you for spending that time. It's it's hard to do and it's it's hard because then how do you begin to quantify it, right? But really, it's it's a feeling and I think you're speaking to, you know, in sixth grade, families and students are saying they're enjoying their experience. That says a lot. So thank you for for doing that work.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna kind of piggyback on what you said. I had a sixth grader last year and a sixth grader this year, and I have seen a lot of improvement, just so the amazing work that you guys are doing, it's really showing. So I just have, you know, last year is reference from this year. So it's I've noticed that the work is getting, you know, hard, challenging. I love the extra reading every night, which is my daughter is like, Mom, sign my paper every week. So like all those little little tweaks that you're doing is really, really making a huge difference. So I really appreciate the the continued focus on academic excellence and also just really raising that bar. So I know it's it's a process and I, you know, you're trying to like figure things out as you go and it's it's never easy with kids, but I really appreciate the commitment that you have shown to that in this past year. Thank you.
I also want to echo all the great work you have done at the middle school, especially the sixth grade seminar class that you have mentioned is very impressive. And as a middle school teacher myself, for the past 10 years, I see a huge difference in students who knows how to do how to do schoolwork successfully, like all the organization skills, executive functioning skills. And you also mentioned about how to facing your fears and how and how to communicate and looking forward into the future. I can see how successful and important it is to the student's life after going through this seminar. Do you feel the necessity of continuing to do similar seminars in the seventh or eighth grade?
That is usually the question that comes when we talk about the successes of sixth grade. in an ideal world, yes, I we do speculate that maybe not every student would require that that experience, but that there could be that there are lots of students who having being explicitly taught those executive functioning skills and organizational skills, having a space to be explicitly taught, to have deliver opportunities to develop social emotional skills like that that are happening across the board. But it it would be nice, I don't know if it is meets our like a rises to our highest level of priority, because when we go back to where the the root of the sixth grade seminar class was being able to provide students who are coming from four different elementary communities to have some grounded common experience. And that that has had that we can, we can say with a lot of confidence that that's happening and what that might look like in seventh, eighth grade. Truthfully, we haven't thought through other than to say we know. A parent, the question you should give us from a parent saying, this was great, can he or she please do it in seventh grade again? But that it's not something that we've undertaken as a conversation yet, but we we also, I think, if you think about our exploratory classes and other options, whether even if it's not a, you know, a tier one opportunity, where might there be, where might there be needs and opportunities to support students beyond that transition year?
Bill, can I just add one thing? Logistically too, just so you know, the way that our sixth grade and seventh, eighth grades is a little bit different, it's a little bit tougher in the seventh and eighth grade because our seventh and eighth graders, they have less exploratories than our sixth graders because our sixth graders have exploratories for a semester, every other day for a semester. So they're exposed to more and then they select in seventh and eighth grade. So they only they have the same exploratory every other day for the full year. So they just, there's less opportunity in their schedule. So it just that makes it a little bit tougher with the seminar, but.
Good to know.
I really appreciate all the questions and observations everyone else has already made. There are only a couple of things I was hoping to add. I mean, I'd love to just thank you for your work on the responding to bias lessons and it's really great to hear the positive feedback from that. That seems to me like a real example of kind of leadership for our district that I think is really great. I also want to just echo what you said, Dr. Miranda, about the values piece. So impressive to hear not just all the intentional work you put into kind of doing that, raising the bar of the values, but then how it's so layered and coherent in the student experience and the teacher experience and that example of the report card language shift, taking that opportunity to reframe that through the lens of your new values. I just want to say, like, hearing you describe the process you went was so exciting. It felt just like a real breath of fresh air as a best practice for how to go about that work. And, you know, I'm not, it's not that I'm not always having that. I often have that experience, honestly, when I like hear from the ground in terms of what's going on in our schools, but that was a highlight for me tonight. And then I also just would like to say I really like the goals as you've set them out because those feel like real actual goals that you're naming, which will be able to sort of next year when you bring your school improvement plan, like those are actual goals that you can track, like how you're doing with those. And I think the the last goal around communicating and advocating for your school's needs, you know, that's that echoes, I think, a goal we set for ourselves as a school committee in terms of something we're also trying to do for the district. So I really, you know, you've given us a lot to think about, but thank you again. And does anyone have any last words, questions? Well, thank you all for coming to represent and yeah. See you at Anastasia.
I just a follow up question for Peter on that. The point Bab raised around the fifth grade, I can't remember exactly what it is. We the People, I think this is something we already talked about and you've said you're you're thinking about and working on, but just, you know, as you develop that, I think that'd be something I'd personally interested to like hear more about of like how we are operationalizing that like across the K5s to support Pierce because obviously that's work that is made easier for them if we are doing it earlier and to the point you made of that program kind of creating that cohesive language and expectation kind of going into it. And you've already shared some things you've.
And yeah, and maybe thinking not just fifth grade, but thinking about this more like as a K-12 type of reality too. You know, I mean, I think a lot of times we look at the transition and we look at three days, we look at a week, you know, we think about this transition as, you know, you're you live in your elementary school and then you prepare in a couple of days and then you're ready. And, you know, I think as I look at it and look at transitions and, you know, like many things here, we've got systems to build and we have to do that thoughtfully and look at, you know, all the pieces to to make sure we're doing what we need to do and not just that I think it's easy to to move towards, let's fix transition by adding a program here or doing this thing there. And I think like you were saying, thinking about this kind of holistically is important. It's something, you know, Bill referenced that he and I have been talking about, you know, and it came up in in regards to the welcome to middle school program and, you know, what should that look like and should that be optional or should that be something that all students have access to? You know, when you do it in the summer, not all kids are going to be able to get there. They have things going on, some families don't have the capacity to get there. You know, there are lots of realities there. So, you know, part of this too is just looking at our four elementary schools and connecting our four elementary schools in ways that they just that 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 kind of like conduit is not there right now. And so it's building that conduit and from that, you know, it it doesn't come from like a mastermind plan of how to do this. We we start building these kind of like connections between our elementary schools and then these things grow and and form and there there's some organic growth that happens too. So I think there's both some some concrete planning to do, but there's also allowing the energy of connecting the schools together to to grow this as well. And connecting, obviously, like we're talking about connecting kids together too.
This is the first I heard about We the People. Is this started at Tucker or somewhere?
I believe it did. It was a full year program starting in fifth grade, but it was in response to something like there was, I think, there was some feedback around the same time that that sixth grade seminar was set up that there were students entering sixth grade not prepared. You're talking about executive function skills and I think this was more around social adjustments. I can't speak to the great detail of the program, but my son was one of the mentors and then another friend whose child was a mentee. And he's, I remember them saying that the students felt more prepared to engage. He went from a very small school, which had a very nurturing environment into Pierce. And as Bill alluded to, the discipline data, there was a lot of experiences that were not positive. And he's been very deliberate since he arrived here about building a culture at Pierce. So it didn't feel transactional, like you come in, you go to class and you leave. So layering all of these experiences for students. And he looked at his data and saw that, you know, students were fighting right after lunch. So he's like, let's do a movement break and give something to do. So he's been very thoughtful and I think the We the People was a combination of him, I don't know if he reached out to the then principal at the Tucker to say, how can we make this transition better for students? But to your point, it would be ideal if it was available to all students. Years ago, they used to have pen pals at the other schools, so they would at least write each other to start an experience. I don't think there's a one easy answer, but we have some things that have worked. And I do think there's room for a pre and post survey to see are children feeling different about their experience now that they've gone through this? So there's ways of measuring it and there are models that the district has implemented that works. And now it's a matter of deciding, you know, do you start over? Do you want to work in partnership? What do the principals say they're experiencing? I would love to hear what the sixth grade teachers at Pierce think now, because at the time they said these kids aren't prepared for this experience. They used to have a family, I think it was like a family night where they'd bring in speakers. An executive function coach came in and a lot of the middle school parents, we were there, learning to how to better prepare our kids. So it was a combination of efforts. It was Parent University, that's what it was called. So it wasn't just one thing. It was how do we build a series of experiences that incorporate families and students, older students as mentors, so students can transition? My personal opinion and from anecdote, it worked really well, but as people transition, we lose things. And I think there's an opportunity here with our new superintendent to think about what is the experience we want for our students and what and how can we prepare them better? And we'll see where it goes.
I also would add that I think we do a very good job at building school pride and it comes through in every presentation, right? Like, which is great, but I think how do we build pride around the system, right? Like it's Milton Public Schools, like I am part of Milton Public Schools. It's not, so that way, it doesn't matter if I went to Glover, if I went to Cunningham, I am part of the system. And I don't think we quite have that. There's sort of this, you know, it's my school pride, which you want that to be part of it, but it should feed into the larger so that we're not seeing ourselves as, you know, just in our own unit. And that I think is credible. And we don't have that many schools, you know? So we really think we can do it.
That's where we need that logo, right? That's the idea behind the logo, honestly, is branding, like we are a district.
I think that kind of falls under the whole, you know, we had an initial conversation about branding and kind of bringing that, like making it cohesive, right? Like, and we don't have that yet, right? Like everybody has their own kind of, even the site council presentations we've seen, they all look different, right? Like they can be, they can have their own personality, but they all look different, you know? So it just, so I think that's where you kind of. So it just, so I think that's where you kind of, all of those pieces, they're little. Like, it's like, oh, it's a presentation, like, it's not. But all of those things matter, right? To create that sense of community. And I think that's what we're trying to do. And I think what you were talking about, kind of, you know, creating that, like, bringing all these schools together in a way and the kids together so that when we get to sixth grade, it doesn't feel like, oh, I'm going to hang out with my friends from Cunningham or I'm going to hang out with my friends from Tucker or Glover or Cali-Cott. You know, it's just, we see each other as like, hey, we all live in this town. This is so great, like, let's, you know, get to know each other better. So I think more opportunities for that would be great. I think it's great, like, I mean, lots of tiny steps and seeing, like, just this past couple of months. But I think, like, we're all kind of headed in the right direction, right? Like, where we want to be. So, all good stuff.
Okay, well, speaking of tiny steps, heading in the right direction. Our next agenda of the month is.
Our calendar. Just having an experience of deja vu right now.
Yes. And just confirming your, like, we're, we're looking at the draft calendar, which is actually living in the folder from last meeting, right? So a couple of things. We, you know, since Selena, you weren't here last time and we felt like we needed to have all of us together to like really bring this conversation to any type of closure for this point in the year and the conversation. I think our goal is to vote to approve or not the version before us. That was the one before us two weeks ago. A lot of questions were, and ideas were raised in, in the conversation that we had most recently. So this is our opportunity to kind of pick that back up where we left off. Of course, have your, like, voice at the table, Selena. And I'll just open it up from there unless you have any other kind of thoughts that you're.
The calendar, we're talking about the same calendar that was in last week's, or two weeks ago, in that folder. We haven't made any changes to that.
Okay.
You know, we had shared previously the contractual obligations we have to certain days as, as you all were considering, you know, days off and the potential of adding holidays. And I think we're, we're now hoping to adopt this calendar for next year and probably a subsequent agenda item, which you referenced in the last meeting, to discuss the committee formation. That was something that, a conversation that you missed.
And just to say, because I know some of this was under discussion last time. So what we would be voting on tonight, discussing and continuing to vote, continuing to hopefully vote on is like the dates as proposed here, not the visuals or the formatting of the calendar in this draft one. But that can all continue to get improved beyond, like, after we've voted on the dates themselves.
So my, my understanding is we're not making any additions, right, any changes from before. And we're going to continue to look at adding in the future, but after walking ourselves through a process, a committee.
What's.
Is that?
I think that's, I think that's an accurate sort of summary of where we ended up. And, you know, that was really driven by the information we received regarding our limitations in terms of real lack of flexibility to make changes within many of the, what are currently days off, including the pre, a previous, just to back up to the last conversation before the winter break, there had been an idea of adding additional days off that would go beyond the one that had been requested of us to honor Eid. And, you know, we then, we realized through looking at the contractual obligations that that's actually infeasible with the current system that we have and knowing that we have to have a buffer for snow days and we have to still end the year by a certain time. So that kind of led into the conversation to look at these models that Charlene had compiled from, which I think you had also, you had maybe been one of the people that requested the ability to compare across different districts who've done this work. And that idea of the subcommittee, oh, I think it would be an advisory committee actually to.
A task force.
Or a task force or some, something that involves members of the MPS staff and community members in addition to school committee members. That, that's kind of where we left off. That's obviously a related and it's, it's something we can discuss in the context of this calendar discussion, but that would be a subsequent vote. And yeah, it, it's just, that's where we ended up at. The desire for a, a process. And that's what the conversation prompted by the Muslim neighbors will have sort of helped us to realize.
That makes sense.
Improving this calendar would also mean you're agreeing to extend the month of June by one week.
The one thing I will add to that is that, given that you're renegotiating the union contract next year, it presents an opportunity for the task force to finish, to coincide with the negotiations and have a, if the recommendation does impact contractual days.
That makes a lot of sense and it allows us to look at this beyond just the requests that initially prompted us and look at it from, you know, a broader, sort of more equitable, I guess, process. An informed process by, by community as well.
I was referring to the typo too.
Yeah.
I see that.
An extra week is seven.
You're talking about the.
No, on the actual calendar.
Yeah.
An extra week on the calendar.
Is it possible to like?
Right.
Yeah, we could, we could make a motion to approve the calendar with the.
Those slight adjustments.
Correction of human ends on Tuesday, the 30th.
I think actually Charlene corrected that. She just didn't put it in this week's folder.
Oh, okay.
We corrected it last time. It just, it didn't show up in this week's folder.
Does anyone else have questions or things to do with any of the other days or things that you're looking at?
No.
Okay, so recognizing that the calendar can and does get updated as needed, you know, sometimes when things happen, right? When we approve any calendar, it's not set in stone. But we do have to approve the calendar. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve this calendar with that correction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Great, and we'll keep talking about the subcommittee or task force, whatever we're going to call it. But thank you all very much for all your, your patience and your, and thank you, Peter and your team for working with us through that.
Yep.
I look forward to what's to come. So is there anything else under the superintendent's report?
I think so. I think we're good.
Okay. So then, moving to the chair's report. We did get clarification that we do need to vote to approve the annual report. Again, I'm sorry for the late sharing of the report. I want to reassure everybody that, you know, I have worked with Stephanie O'Keefe. Really appreciate all her efforts on this large project to compile this report, which is really a detailed summary of the work that's happened in Milton Public Schools going back to last year. The report will be included in the town-wide annual report and we need to submit that in order to, to be included. So.
Just.
What questions or thoughts do people have?
Yeah, just, so this is not actually school-related report? In terms of, this is not a DESI compliance thing? This is a town, is this a state requirement that towns put this out? Is this just something Milton does or most towns do?
Every year towns produce an annual report. Milton produces it and passed in book form, although they're doing more electronic now. But all the departments submit reports. The, there are treasurer's reports, there are accountant's reports. It's, you know, 300 pages of incredibly light night reading, which I have 25 years of them if anyone wants to come read them there. But it's, it's something that is done every year. Towns are required to have an annual report. So each department does a submission and the schools generally is one of the longer ones because we are a substantial portion of the town.
And are these like headers, the standard headers by which we report on an annual basis?
Town report also has the, the approved minutes of prior town meetings, all the results of elections in the past year. And so it becomes really a compendium of everything that's happened in the town for that year. That's the purpose of a town report. There's no real fixed format in terms of that. I mean, probably the format you're looking at for our report is probably fairly similar to one that's been done in the past, but it's not prescribed in any way.
Yeah, so, I mean, what, what we have here is school by school, just highlights, which having, having read through it, we can see a lot of familiar information that was already shared in, you know, several ways with us last year. But then it's, after it's school by school, it's, it goes by program and department within the school. So there's preschool, special education, you know, and the various departments, summer programs, et cetera. It's really just descriptive in nature. It, it is, it's just summarizing everything that happened, basically.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I'm just, I guess I'm wondering, like, it has elementary curriculum, but not no middle school or high school curriculum stuff? It includes health services around, data around.
I think it's a, my, my sense in reviewing it has been, and of course, it's like a lot of things, I, I don't think anything is set in stone. So I think we can probably, this is the kind of thing we could look at in future years and talk about what do we want to see? And probably talk with the town about that too. Because I have some of the same questions you have. But I, I think it's probably a joint, jointly written by Unit B and our principals. And so everyone's kind of sharing the, the things that they do in here, which is why I think, if you look at the, our constructs too, they don't all, there's not like, some of our staff members are, are, are working on elementary curriculum, some are working on K-12 curriculum. So that's also, I think, reflected here as well.
That there are redundancies in it for sure, but that just sort of highlights sort of the things that are happening in more than one place at more than one time throughout the year. So I'm all in favor of, I'm all in favor of keeping on, like, looking at how to streamline it going forward. I think in the meantime, you know, we have a technical, like, duty to just be able to approve this. And if people, I mean, certainly if anybody's like not in a position to approve it, then that's your decision. I feel confident to, you know, for myself, that it's accurate in, in its function of describing what, what has happened.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, I have not read all 30 pages to be, to be transparent here with my vote.
Which you didn't, which wasn't the expectation either.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, not been the expectation.
If you say you read it, I trust that this is accurate and all those things. And I have no problem voting. I was just more a process thing of, this feels like a word vomit of just a lot of information. I don't know how like helpful. I don't mean to put that indelicately, people put a lot of time into it. It's just, it feels like a list of just like things and I just don't know how, maybe, I don't know. Maybe I'm in the minority and this is very helpful to many people to read this over. I just, it seems like a lot, 30 pages is a lot of work, a lot of people's time. And I just want to make sure that that's a good use of people's time and we're not making them do a whole lot for nothing when we don't need to be asking them to do this much work. So that's.
I think it's, they're great questions. I think it's something that I'd like to talk with the town about too. I think this is a joint, you know, like, their vision for what this might look like in the future. And, yeah, like, what, what, I mean, I guess the question is, what are we, what do we want to say? You know, like, what's the end, end goal in terms of, is it five pages to be really concise about some of the key levers we were pulling? Kind of looking at outcomes? Is it just like an overview, you know, more of a kind of a historical overview? Like Lizzie was saying in terms of, these are the things we did. These are the things we're focused on. These are the people that were involved in those things. I think there's probably a long history here.
And I would imagine we would want eventually to get to a point where it's a more coherent document with sort of those highlights of, you know, what are we most proud of? What are the challenges that remain and what are the outcomes, right? I mean, that data, those data points are key. I think about my own organization's annual report. That's what we try to do, right? And we have a page that's by the numbers because we want to make sure for folks, so that's what they care about. They go there. And then there's the storytelling of.
I've seen yours, it's good.
Yeah, it's good.
All right, so you want to do that. But yeah, I think we, we can strive for that, but it sounds like we have this need to get this year's done.
Yeah.
But knowing that we can look ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we don't use the word, we don't say pillars in this. We only talk about the three pillars in the context of PD, but nothing else before. We don't talk about MCAS performance in here. I don't think we talk about the survey data in here. Yeah, so there's just, in my mind, a lot of the things I was expecting to see within some, some of this is just not in there. But I'm more than happy to vote to approve this and I will, I can make a motion anytime people are ready.
Go for it.
The requirement of the Mass General law is that towns create one. Certain things by law have to be there, including a report of the school committee, a report of the town accountant, a report of the town treasurer, a jury list. A jury list, record, you know, minutes of town meetings and so forth. There's a list of things that are prescribed by various pieces of the Mass General Laws, and they get collected under a different chapter of the Mass General Laws in a town report that has to be published within 90 days at the end of subsequent calendar year or something like this, so there's, but, school committee report is one of the requirements that is in there, and beyond that, towns can have bylaws that require other things. Milton requires, Milton's bylaws require reports of the various different departments as well, so there's, it's sort of a catch-all to, as a repository of all the reports that are supposed to be given annually by various different people, and it goes on file at the Secretary of State's office in Boston, I think, and, because I know Milton, you, if you're a town meeting member, you're used to getting the paperback copy of it, they go, they print some hardcover copies, you know, it'd go in the various official places for, if you want to see some old hardbound copies of these, they do exist, but they go to the Secretary of State in various different places.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 annual report.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The next part we have here is the revised school committee meeting calendar, and, and we do have this in our folder. I have to be honest, and I am actually not sure.
If this is an actual?
Well, I see that, I see it's updated, an updated version, I see that we have some of these highlighted pieces. This may have, just be reflecting some of the changes that we've made. Actually not 100% sure, I mean, we, we're not approving this, this is just for us to kind of review together. But I am noticing, I actually, I'm wondering if we can talk about this.
I think this came up relative to the governance, when we were talking about the governance meeting and
We shifted that, oh, Bow is gonna be away, wait.
That's March.
March 14th.
Yes.
Okay, and then
But I think this came up as an agenda item out of the govern, talking about the governance meetings and scheduling them, and then just kind of like getting people on the same page.
Okay, well, so let's take that quick opportunity right now, because I also want to raise this idea of April 3rd.
Right, I won't be here for that, but that's
But, it, so like, maybe we can There was the idea of trying to postpone that
To the following
Meeting to the following week, to April 10th. I haven't been able to check with everybody if that would be possible for you. So I guess there are two, two calendar, for us, calendar questions would be, can we look at another date for March 14th? And then, would it work for people to meet not the first Wednesday of April, but the second Wednesday of April, so that we could have all members present for that superintendent evaluation discussion?
I'll be traveling, I'll be out of town.
On April 10th?
Yes.
Okay. What about the week before?
March?
It's March 27th, doesn't, I know we normally meet on Wednesdays, but is
March 27th.
On, on Wednesday would work better?
March 20th is
27th.
And we could do it on the 20th, I guess, too.
That seems so early.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep it.
I think we were just trying to get all the feedback in, right?
Yeah.
We'll just have to kind of push things up, that's all, if we move it, if we push it, is March 27th possible?
Want to come back up?
Okay. Would that work for you?
Yeah, I can do the 27th.
Okay.
I see, just to name, the only other option would be the 17th. Because the goal was to make sure we do the summative evaluation before the transition.
That's school vacation week.
That's a great point, okay, nevermind.
Really hard time to have a meeting.
Thank you.
I think I can do the 27th, I have a board, my board meeting that day, but we're having a full retreat, so I just have to figure out when to end.
Okay.
When do you start?
They just told me that it was two full days at Nellie Mae, and I was like, okay, I'll be there.
I have a retreat, to, those two full days, too.
Which days did you say?
The 27th and the 28th. Usually they'll have like a dinner, and I'll tell them, I need to be at the school committee, you keep that fine dining meal to yourself.
Give you a nice dinner on the Tuesday.
You gotta be there for the toast, though, right?
Bring it to the meeting, okay.
All right, well
I'm sure it'll be fine.
I mean, I definitely appreciate everyone's flexibility, why don't we try to do, to make that shift back up April 3rd to March 27th?
Okay.
And that is going to be when we do the final evaluation discussion. And then, the other question is March 13th. A governance retreat, when Bow is gonna be out of the country, because that's your spring break, so.
I'll be leaving.
I mean, looking at this, looking at the calendar, could we look at maybe flipping that and trying to just postpone the governance meeting until that second week of, you're traveling, never mind. Okay, we don't have to figure
Yeah, we can do this
We don't have to figure this out. We don't have to figure this out right now. We'll continue to try to work on that, Bow.
I don't have to be here. I do wish he's spiritual.
Yeah, no, I know, and we don't, if, if we can't all make every meeting, obviously, that's, that's life, and that's fine, but I think the most, the best we can to like, not plan around known conflicts, I mean, to, to plan around known conflict. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up. Committee reports. Finance, that?
Yes, so we need to approve vendor warrant, in the motion, to approve vendor warrant number 27, and the amount of $317,462.95 payable on January 11th, 2024.
So moved?
A second? David? Thank you. And, as I mentioned previously, we had to postpone our meeting, we had some calendar changes, we're scheduled to meet on the 23rd, and at that point, we'll have our final finance committee review of the budget and vote, but I think Peter alluded to the fact that he wanted to share some updates today, so.
Oh, you mean
I think you said that earlier, when I said we can take it off, because we had not met, you said there was some other things that you might want to share.
Oh, I was just thinking of things that you might want to bring forward, or?
No, I've got nothing there.
Yeah. No, I don't have anything, I mean, I think I'll, I'll save what we talked about for our our meeting next week.
Right, thank you.
So we'll have that, so it will be presented next Tuesday, including a joint, that's joint with the select board?
Yeah, we changed it to Tuesday, that's right.
The, the beginning is just the school committee, finance committee, and then the select board will join at 8:30.
Okay, so at 8:00 AM is finance subcommittee, okay, and then presenting it to the select board, and then at our next school committee meeting is when we'll vote to submit the budget, okay?
But as we shared the last time, it's 99% done.
Yeah.
There's some minor changes, it's not anything significant.
Okay, great.
And we're working with the, to try to set up something with the warrant committees, school subcommittee, initial conversation with them, finding out, for instance, who's on it. And once we get past Tuesday, we can set up any conversations we need to have with them.
With the full committee, so Amanda Cerrillo is the single representative that Dave Humphries made, she's been at all of our meetings, to my knowledge, so I'm very pleased that she's been following along, and she's appreciative of the level of detail, and I think it's a matter of however they would like it to play out in terms of whether she's presenting what she's learned, or if we're all going, I think it's a conversation that
Yeah.
We'll have to have.
But then they have a small group that comes to a finance subcommittee meeting, I think they're actually creating a schools subcommittee more than just Amanda, so that group might meet with, say, finance subcommittee initially, or with the full school committee, and then, you know, go back to, we'll have to see how the warrant committee wants to proceed.
All right, facilities?
Yeah, we had a meeting today, just a little bit earlier, talked about a few things, mostly just kind of some updates, we talked about the capital budget process and timeline, there's been no real updates on that, but obviously the big, there are multiple things within the capital budget for school facilities that the school committee approved, biggest one of those being kind of an allocation potentially for the Cunningham Fourth Floor. Again, there's really been not a whole lot of movement on it yet, but we believe kind of in the next month that those committees will continue to meet, and that will go in front of the select board to get potential approval, and we talked about, you know, whether or not it will need to be bonded or not, and a lot of kind of boring conversation around that. So, not a whole lot of movement on there, we also just talked briefly about some of the ongoing space needs discussions that came out of our fall walkthroughs, and just got some updates, you know, talked briefly kind of about the Cunningham Fourth Floor and potential timeline for that, which seems like, given we're asking for the allocation this year, you know, the soonest really we'd be able to spend that money and do anything, likely it will be a summer 2025 project. And so, just talked about those things, talked about Curry College, didn't get a huge update on Curry College, but there's still, other than just like ongoing conversations, and discuss how kind of that process kind of impacts also potentially, any potential programmatic decisions around the Cunningham Fourth Floor, given some of the preschool space within Cunningham. And so, just, I think the update on that was just that they're having a lot of internal conversations with staff around like the, the good and the bad of this kind of off-site space, and what that might be able to look like, and responding to some feedback or concerns from families, or communication with families around kind of, again, what, what even the idea of this is, obviously, the goal is just give more space to all of our students and our staff, and, but how we do that responsibly, and with strong programming for everybody's experience. And then we talked a little bit about document storage, which is another thing with our walkthroughs, we saw to spaces that might, could be freed up if we didn't have so much paper, and that being kind of an overwhelming potential project for a district of our size and age, and how many documents there are. And then the other is the consolidated facility space that currently resides in the lowest level of high school, and that again being similar to the discussion we had around Pierce and the Milton Access at Pierce, it's a townwide kind of department that is, you know, taking up space within a very tightly spaced school, and so is there an opportunity to move that out into other school, I'm sorry, town building facility spaces, and so, talked to the consolidated facility director a bit about that, and, you know, what would be potentially some avenues, and Peter's gonna have a conversation with the town administrator about some initial discussions to, again, just see if we can free up space and even potentially provide the consolidated facilities team a better space outside of the, you know, the hole we've, they've been siloed to below us. Any other?
No.
All right. We have two sets of minutes tonight. Let's see. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for December 20th, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Any edits, changes? Okay, all in favor? Great. Taking these separately. And because Dr. Randall wasn't here for this next set, which is for January 3rd, I did have two really minor edits. I suggested them in the margins, is that
Yeah, we can, we can do this.
They're just, it's two titles that I noticed.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 3rd, 2024. Did anyone have any additional changes? Two that I made, okay. So, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All abstain? I don't know what, is it, what goes, yes, no abstain? So, anyway. Sorry. Okay, great, so that, that just brings us to next item agenda, so we are meeting January 31st in our retreat, that's the next meeting that we have.
And we have a three-week gap between school committee meetings, I don't know if you
Right, because it's, because we have five Wednesdays in January, so it's typically like the first and third Wednesday of the month, right? So, on January 31st, we'll obviously be posting that agenda, it continues to be our ongoing conversations about improving our government, our governance, and especially looking at our procedures and protocols as a school committee, continuing to think about the goal of a handbook for the school committee, so that's something we'll talk about next week, or, sorry, in two weeks. In terms of our next full, regular school committee meeting, we've already discussed we'll have the FY25 prioritized budget to approve, we've talked about the student representative report, the Milton High School Program of Studies. Will you be, are there any other items? We'll have a policy subcommittee report.
Yep.
There'll be a school I'm not sure if we might be welcoming new hires, if I want an agenda item for that.
Okay, let's not jinx ourselves, but sure. Are you, where do things stand with your priorities report?
That's a good question. We are pretty, getting pretty close, we're now kind of in the, the very final stages before it goes out to our leadership team for kind of review from them, to make sure we've got everything. Yeah, it's possible, it's possible there or the following meeting, I would say.
Okay.
For sure the following meeting, but
Okay.
That is the target.
Okay, great, they'll just keep us posted.
We're working, once we get the final draft done, we're working with Jack Rabbit, again, so part of, I, I'm not sure how long they're gonna need it.
Yeah. Okay.
Three weeks between our next two meetings, too, we're really taking it easy. Doesn't feel that way.
We haven't started with the budget yet.
So relaxing.
Deb and I have been out
No.
All week, right?
Every night. Every night. Friday and Saturday, we've gone, why not?
Yeah, confusing within the, watching the select board.
Something like that in the Bible.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, great, thank you. Good night, everybody.